It is ten minutes after seven o'clock. We will reconvene, this meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. Welcome. Thank you all for being here. We truly appreciate your support and your interest in the Waco Public Schools and your support of the young people we're going to recognize tonight. At this point, I need to let you know that the board's purpose is to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the districts. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals as management is the sole responsibility and discretion of the superintendent and her staff. Also, if you have a cellphone or other electronic device, if you would either turn it off or put it on silent at this time, it would be appreciated. And, once again, thank you. We can't tell you how much we appreciate your support. We also want to welcome all the folks watching at home on Channel 17. And at this time, we'd ask that you join us as we pause for a moment of silence for prayer, contemplation, reflection, or meditation. Moving on to item six, Pledge of Allegiance. Dr. Kane?
Thank you, Mr. President. We're pleased to have two high-achieving students from Indian Spring Middle School to lead our pledge. Please welcome eighth graders Tamara Lee Ritchie and Sebastian Baragon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, students. Board members, please join me in front of the dais. Tonight's recommend- recommendation. We begin the special recognition portion of the meeting by introducing and thanking our Pledge of Allegiance leaders who come to us from Indian Spring Middle School. Eighth grader Tamara Ritchie is proud to be at Indian Spring where she is involved in the Avid Program, athletics, and UIL. Tamara is good at math, has a goal of attending business school at Harvard, and would someday like to be the CEO of a major company. Right now, Tamara is getting her feet wet in the business world by helping out at her dad's restaurant, The Wing Factory. Sebastian Baragon is also an eighth grade student at Indian Spring where he says the students make it a very special place. Sebastian plays in the band, sings in the honor choir, and competes in the UIL science. In his spare time, Sebastian enjoys working on cars. Currently, he and his father are overhauling and rebuilding a '97 Dodge. Sebastian plans to attend a technical college, would like to pursue a career in mechanical engineering or music, but his real dream is to become a NASCAR driver. Thank you again, Sebastian and Tamara, for leading the Pledge of Allegiance, and enjoy your books provided by Barnes &amp; Noble Booksellers, a proud adopted school partner of Waco ISD. As cross-country 2014, as he was walking around after the District 17-5A cross-country meet this year, athletic director Johnny Tusa must have felt like a proud Papa. Very understandable when you consider that Waco ISD brought home the individual gold medal in both the girls' and boys' divisions. Three additional WISD runners claimed top-ten finishes. A total of three teams from Waco High and University advanced to the regional meet, and one of the runners ultimately became WISD's first state qualifier in more than two decades. Tonight, we're very pleased to recognize some lean and mean cross-country runners from University and Waco High Schools. From University High School, Linda Gonzalez, fourth-place finish, regional qualifier. Jasmine Lozama, regional qualifier. And, girls' coaches Brad Settles and Belinda Denman. From the UHS Boys team, Emmanuel Lopez, regional qualifier. Jairo Escanero, regional qualifier. Oscar Almonzen, regional qualifier. Chris Rivera, regional qualifier. Frankie Oliveras, regional qualifier. Jeremiah Alvera, regional qualifier. Jose Yamas, regional qualifier. Darius Guerrero, regional alternate. Diego Mendoza, regional alternate. Boys' coaches Kane Queros and Ricky Perez. From Waco High School, Rafael Medina, regional qualifier. Christopher Salinas, regional qualifier. Diego Chavez, regional qualifier. Antonio Danell, regional qualifier. David Vaigas, regional qualifier. Arturo Palacios, regional qualifier. Alex Salas, District 17-5A champion, region qualifier and top-ten finisher, state qualifier, the first for Waco ISD in 20 years. And the two coaches helping our teams, Casey Sumi and Joe Bishop. And finally tonight, the history-making volleyball team from University High School. This year, the talented Lady Trojans went on to shock the area tour throughout central Texas, digging, setting, and spiking their way to a first-ever district championship. Kuschara Newton, first-team All-District, Academic All-District. Deja Simmons, Honorable Mention All-District, Academic All-District. Malina Martinez, District 17-5A Setter of the Year, Academic All-District, Academic Tekeila Kilpatrick, Academic All-District. Ty Warren, Second Team All-District, Academic All-District, Academic All-State. Sean Tavia Kennedy, Honorable Mention All-District. Justice McGowan, District 17-5A Offensive Player of the Year, Academic All-District. Andrea Penny, First Team All-District, Academic All-District. Courtland Henderson, Academic All-District. Lenicia Robinson, Second Team All-District. Libby Cologne, First Team All-District, Academic All-District, Academic All-State. Alexis Parish, Academic All-District. And assistant coach Karen Ramirez, head coach in District 17-5A Coach of the Year, Thank you, coaches and team. You have brought us great honor. One more round of applause. Waco ISD is fortunate to have more than 200 adopted school partners volunteering their time and talents on campuses throughout the district. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize our Partners of the Month for November. Parkdale Elementary and HEB have an ongoing activity called Undercover Groceries. Loss Prevention Experts at HEB are always on the lookout for shoplifters. When they visit Parkdale, they stress the value of honesty for third- and fourth-grade students. The students always have plenty of questions for their visitors. They're always eager to be honest, law-abiding citizens who make good choices. Parkdale is excited to have the HEB Loss Prevention Team as an adopted school partner. Highland Baptist Church and Dean Highland Elementary. Last year, Highland Baptist started Reading Buddies Club with Dean Highland that has grown wildly successful. Church volunteers come Monday through Thursday during lunch to read with students in third through fifth grade. In addition to reading, strong bonds are formed between the students and volunteers. Highland Baptist has also begun a popular after-school program that provides students snacks, homework assistance, Bible study, and an evening meal. This program provides Dean Highland students with a safe and healthy environment after the school day is over. And if that's not enough, Associate Pastor Mark Whibley, a former Waco High School basketball coach, has started the Hoops for Hope Basketball Program for Dean Highland Boys on Wednesday evenings. Thank you, Highland Baptist Church, for dedicating time and services to the students of Dean Highland. World Hunger Relief in J.H. Hines Elementary. Partner of the Month activity, Growing Around Campus. The partnership between Hines and World Hunger Relief has been a growing experience, literally. Volunteers teach students how to grow a garden and then use the vegetables they grow to cook delicious recipes. World Hunger Relief has now started a Lunch Buddies program at Hines where they listen to students, share stories about their young lives. Thank you, World Hunger Relief, for making a huge difference at J.H. Hines Elementary. Voice in Waco High School. Partner of the Month activity, Prevention is Key. Voice, Viable Options in Community Endeavors program, was very helpful at Waco High during Red Ribbon Week. The group brought banners for students to sign and distributed bookmarks, ribbons, pencils, wristbands, all with the same message, "Stay Away from Drugs and Alcohol." Red Ribbon Week was just another opportunity for Voice to strengthen its drug and alcohol prevention message at Waco High. The group also teaches how to cope with peer pressure. Thank you, Voice volunteers, for a superb partnership at Waco High School. Thank you, Board, and thank you, everyone, for all their hard work.
We've got one coming right back. Next, item eight, Audience for Guests. No one has signed up, so we'll move on to item nine, the Consent Agenda. I don't believe I've been asked to pull anything from the consent agenda. Does anybody want anything pulled? All right, then I will entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Tekele. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item 10, Consideration of Gifts and Grants to Waco ISD. Dr. Kane?
The administration is asking for approval, whoops, wrong page, Gifts and Grants to Waco ISD. Walmart Hewitt Drive donated school supplies to Dean Highland Elementary, a gift worth approximately $5,000. Popeye's Restaurant donated 750 kids' meals as certificates of achievement for Kendrick Elementary's pre-K through fifth graders. The October gifts report is attached. The total amount in gifts, cash, items, and service in the district for October 2014 is $19,621.50. The quarterly gifts report for the third quarter months of July, August, and September is also attached. The total amount in gifts, cash, items, service in the district for this quarter is $20,052.19. For grants, the district was awarded $150,808 from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Division in support of the Suspend Kids to School program. The program offers alternative interventions to reduce out-of-class and out-of-school suspension through Safe Schools ambassadors, peer mediation, student court, and diversion classes. We will have an increase of $150,808 in grant funding to Waco ISD if the board accepts these gifts, which is the recommendation of administration.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. Any questions or comments on the gifts? Then I will entertain a motion to accept the gifts as presented. Thank you, Ms. Tekele. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Murphy. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. Moving on to item 11, Reports and Discussion. Public report on progress at meeting the highly qualified teacher requirements. Dr. Kane, Ms. Botelho?
Ms. Botelho is making her way over. She has worked on this so hard and considers this a personal obligation to make certain that the district shines in every area that I'm going to ask her if she would make this report to the board.
Thank you, Dr. Kane. I would like to report that we are 100% highly qualified in Waco ISD. I would like to thank my staff, the HR staff, and the principals for selecting quality candidates who are highly qualified. Thank you.
Ms. Tekele?
Elaine, for the sake of our audience and for our parents and community, could you describe what highly qualified means? Because I think it is an accomplishment that we have 100% of our teachers meet that.
Yes, ma'am. Whenever we hire a teacher that's in a core subject area, the federal government requires that they have the appropriate certification to teach our children. And so, when we advertise and recruit, we look for teachers who obtain the appropriate certification, whether it's math, science, English, elementary. That's what we look for, and we meet that compliance. Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Tekele. And just to follow up, I mean, folks may say, well, that's kind of a no-brainer. Of course, they've got to be certified in the area they teach. But in some of the areas like math and science, some of the foreign language, it's difficult to do that. And you guys really had to go over and above to make sure we had folks who meet the standard of highly qualified in all those.
Yes, it can be challenging. We do have critical shortage areas statewide, and I think we've done a pretty good job recruiting. And also, thanks to the board for allowing us to be competitive with our salary and our stipends. That really does help us in obtaining highly qualified status.
Any other questions or comments? Great job. Thank you, Ms. Botelho. Next, item B, Behavior Intervention Aid Overview at the High Schools. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Beginning in the 2014-15 school year, all Waco ISD campuses were allocated behavioral intervention aids. Last month, the elementary principals talked about their experience. We're going to have the high school principals, and we're going to start with Dr. Shepherd. Dr. Shepherd, if you would just kind of give the board an idea of how you're using your behavioral intervention aids, if it's helping?
I have one paraprofessional behavior aid, and then I have a certified behavioral specialist. How I use mine is they're in charge of the governor's grant for safe school, peer mediation, student court. The paraprofessional, I'm lucky enough to have a wonderful Hispanic teacher and a Hispanic paraprofessional male, and they handle a lot of the issues that's tied to Boys Town, social skills intervention, working with kids in small groups and individuals. I really don't have to use them as monitors in lunchrooms and hallways and those kind of things. So, they make a lot of parent calls, peer mediations. We have a referral process where if kids know that someone's having an issue with each other, well, then that goes through a referral process that goes back to one of those two, and then they work with usually a couple of other kids and bring them in for peer mediation and talk about what the issues are and then steps to solve it. So, a lot of my parent involvement and kids that are either behind in credits, it looks like they might fail for the six weeks, or attended issues, well, those two are making a lot of phone calls and having those parents come in to meet with them and to meet with the principals of the cohort principals to meet and talk about the issues before they become major problems. So, I think it's a smooth thing when you combine that with CIS and some of the other things that we have going on that kind of proactively meets problems before they happen. I think it really helps us out a lot.
Any questions for Dr. Shepherd? Ms. Manning?
Have you had the opportunity to see, is there some difference in referrals or anything from last year? I know there's still a part of the year and everything, but is there any, you can detect any difference so far?
I think it does prevent, it does prevent kids being sent to ISS, and the number of referrals that goes to alternative schools are really pretty low. I think we have like 30 seats, and we hardly ever have more than 10 or 12 kids there. But I think a lot of it's just dealing with kids that are about to have a problem and just addressing behaviors and then getting a hold of their parents before problems start.
Other questions? Comments for Dr. Shepherd?
Thank you, sir.
I couldn't hold this man back if I tried. I did save you off of a PowerPoint, though. I'll tell you.
Gave us a written report.
Well, I couldn't stop that with the PowerPoint.
I'm a little bit disappointed.
Is this homework?
I did not get an opportunity to present the PowerPoint that we've been working on.
Next time, I need to say, no PowerPoint, no written report. Yes. Yeah, yeah, right. Come back in four years and show us your presentations.
She told me that we only had four minutes, so I felt like it was very difficult to do a PowerPoint and talk about the difference that our behavior aids has made at Waco High School.
We'll show you how nice we are because we really want to hear it. Your clock hasn't even started yet.
Okay, I appreciate it.
It'll start now.
I think it's very important that you, first of all, choose the right persons for any job. And one of our main goals at the beginning was to create a positive learning environment at Waco High School. And these guys have done a great job of helping us accomplish that in a short period of time. And I'd like to take this opportunity to go ahead and introduce them if I could. First, we have Sharonice Whitey. Go ahead and stand up, please, and wave at everybody. Thanks so much. She is a former Waco High graduate, okay? Thank you. Andrew Weaver, he's another former Waco High graduate. Chris Wilson, another former Waco High graduate. And I didn't want to seem too biased to Waco High, so we went ahead and hired Dennis Estel. He is not a former Waco High graduate. He is doing an excellent job, so.
Coach, Coach, you like to say, how you get all them people like that?
And one of them played football at A&amp;M. Weaver did outstanding job for us there, so we are very fortunate to have all of these individuals, and they have done an outstanding job. We mentioned them the other day at our faculty meeting, and our teachers just, you know, they're really pleased with what they're doing daily, on a daily basis. So, I'm thankful. I know it's Thanksgiving time, so we are very thankful to have these guys. And I know it's getting close to Christmas time, and we're going, we want to go ahead and make it be known now that for Christmas, we would like to have two additional ones.
I knew it! I knew it!
So, let's go ahead and put that out there right now.
Do you want them in stockings or can they just show up?
And just for, to go with a few of the duties, well, we do use ours in the hallway to manage tardies and just monitor the halls altogether, after-school detention, and also Saturday school. They are the ones that's basically in charge. We have an administrator that will come, but they're the ones that sign the kids in and make sure that they go where they're supposed to go. They assist the administrative team in, as far as handling Level 1 referrals. We have Level 1 referrals. That's the next-to-the-last page there in your handout. We also, we have 19 brand-new teachers, and we have 13 first-year teachers to Waco High School. And the administrative team, we decided to start assigning them to teachers or to areas where we might have discipline concerns. And so, we might say, okay, go to this class for the first 15 minutes, or there's a sub in this class, go there at the beginning of the class or the end of the class, and that has been very, very helpful. We want to retain our teachers. 19 brand-new teachers, 13 new to Waco High. We don't want to go through this again next year, so we are trying to do all that we can to support our teachers.
Coach Love, to the extent you are assigning folks to particular classrooms for 15 minutes or particular, is that being well-received by the teachers?
Yes, it is. Our teachers, again, when we mention behavior aids, trust me, they start applauding right away, right away. As a matter of fact, one of them just, we have a little award that we give outstanding teachers every two weeks, where one of our teachers decided to give it to one of our aides. As a matter of fact, Mr. Weaver is the one that received it. Received a lion pride because of, you know, what he's been doing, you know, not just him, but all of them in particular. As a matter of fact, the teacher said, I want to give it to all of them, but we don't have a one lion, so I'll just pick him. They also, behavior contracts. Whenever a kid, what we're trying to do is monitor the number of out-of-school suspensions and in-school suspensions, and what we do, when a kid receives three or more, they are assigned to one of these individuals here, okay? And we put them on a contract. I think that's the last page of your handout. And we have some kids who have been successful, also kids who returned from the alternative school or from challenge, they automatically get placed on one of those behavior contracts. And that's one of the main things is to check in with them, to monitor what they're doing. We do not want them to go back to the alternative school. You know, when I was at the alternative school, this principal, the recidivism rate was huge, and when kids come back, first of all, we don't want them to go, but when they come back, we definitely do not want them to return. Also, two of them is managing our peer mediation, and then we are starting next semester, our teen court. We went to university to visit them, and we observed what they're doing. we observed what they're doing, and we're going to get that in place for the next semester. So we have two of them going to do teen court, and two of them is already managing our peer mediation. So these guys are doing an outstanding job. And I want to stand before you and tell you that we've been able to do a lot of walkthroughs as far as administrate... The administrative team is concerned, well over 2,000 in the first two, six weeks of school. And it's all contributed to these guys being able to handle some of the Level One referrals and just being visible. And, you know, we really want to get into those classrooms and help our teachers. So again, we really want to retain our teachers for next year. And any questions at this time about anything?
Mr. Manning?
Again, I'm... Hopefully, the next time, Dr. Kane, you give me more time. I'd like to present a PowerPoint. Any questions for myself or for any of these guys here?
Manning, go ahead.
Coach?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Love, I know another thing that you got going on because of my past as part of it. You have a mentor program going on there also, am I correct?
That's correct.
And how is that going?
Well, it's going quite well. We are continuing to try and... That's part of our parent involvement specialists. They are selecting or asking more mentors to become involved with our kids. And that's one of the things that we're doing, going out to the community. We talk... I think I mentioned that a little bit the last time I talked about parent involvement or how we go out to the different areas in the community to try and get parents more involved in their kids' education.
So, I mean, the combination of your intervention specialists and the mentor program is... I mean, they all support each other, right?
Exactly. Exactly.
Okay.
And again, these guys, they're doing an outstanding job, and we have a real, real good team. They work very well together. Pardon me?
How many mentors do you have? Do you know offhand?
We have... I think we have two. How many do we have? Four? Four mentors, yes.
Okay.
See, they got two new ones without my knowledge, but that's good.
Ms. Teakell?
I have a question about the two additional aides.
Yes.
So if the Board were to ask the administration to look into funding two additional aides, does that mean you're going to come back at, what, Easter and ask for another two?
I would be very happy and very pleased if we could get two additional ones, because I would really like to assign one to each of our APs and then continue to do some of the things that we're doing, but I think that would be a lot easier to manage.
Ms. Teakell, coincidentally, I was there today for a visit, and I will tell you, the term "law and order" is Waco High School. I mean, there was a gentleman in the front, and he was... He knew where every kid was supposed to be, and then some girl walked by to pick up something from her mother, a little ROTC guy, and he said, "Oh, it's right here." And he just... He's just... I'm telling you, it is a different school, and Ed Love has made that difference.
With the help of everyone else.
With the help of everybody else. But yes, that would be something that, Ms. Teakell, I would very much support.
Well, I, for one, would like to see us do what we can to get you additional help that you are requesting.
Thank you. I'd appreciate it.
Now, do we get the results?
We're giving them.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes.
Now, you said a dangerous precedent for all the principals watching at home.
Yeah, it's coming up now.
They're all going to come up, cite Christmas, and ask for more staff positions.
And threaten with a presentation.
In all seriousness, I know Ms. Teakell has had two sons come through Waco High. Obviously, all three of mine, I've got one still there. Mr. Dupuy has one there. I know Mr. Pettis has a grandson at University High. And one of the things we're always approached with is, you know, what about the learning environment? What about the disruptions? And to the extent these folks are helping you really change that culture and create a learning environment that is positive, where the kids can thrive and really receive the education that we all want them to do, it's wonderful. And thank you for your efforts, and I agree, if what you're telling this Board, in all seriousness, is two more positions would even make that better in terms of having the coverage you need, I think we need to give you what you need to be successful.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
I have one more comment.
Ms. Teakell?
I think, was it last week that we got our discipline numbers?
Mm-hmm.
And I noticed that Waco High's referral numbers have dropped
That's correct.
from two years ago, last year, and then again this year. So you can see in that data that we're being given. I don't know how often you're giving that to us. Once a month?
At every workshop.
Every workshop. And actually, we talked about some of the changes that were being made, and so you can see it in the data. It's not just anecdotal. You can really see the numbers dropping.
Thank you.
It's good. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
He asked for two positions. We give it to him, and then we clap for him.
I'm telling you, he's like that. He is like that.
All right. Item 11C is rezoning Carver Middle School with public input. This is, I guess, the second published opportunity for public input on looking at a way, perhaps, to try to balance the attendance zones between ultimately the two high schools and the impact that would have on the middle school. It's my understanding no one has signed up this evening. Dr. Kane, do you want to let folks know who may be watching either live or watching a tape delay when the other opportunities are?
Yes, thank you, sir. Actually, we have the Thanksgiving holidays, and then when we come back, December 2nd, which is a Tuesday night, I'm going to double-check if that's a Tuesday. I know it's December 2nd. Yes, at Hines, at 6:30, we're going to go out into the community, and the Board will just have a few words to say to kind of set up the situation so everyone can sign the card, because each of you have told me that you want to make certain everyone has input, and you want to hear any concerns or support for it. So we have set that up. That will be the third opportunity. The fourth opportunity will be the January workshop. The fifth opportunity would be the January regular meeting, which I will ask the Board to make a decision that night, unless the Board says they'd like a little bit more time.
Okay. I know we've discussed this at a couple of workshops. Anybody have any questions for the administration tonight? All right, then we'll move on to Item 13. Item 12, announcements. Dr. Kane?
Yes, sir. Food for Families. The annual Food for Families Drive concludes this weekend. I'm happy to report that several of our student organizations are once again participating by either conducting food drives or helping the good folks at KWTX-TV unload the dozens of cars and trucks that will be dropping off food tomorrow. Turkey Trot, the ninth annual Turkey Trot Fun Run, and the 5K is this Saturday, November 22nd, in Cameron Park. We are so thankful that race sponsor Altrusa has chosen to donate a significant portion of the proceeds from this year's race to Waco ISD homeless outreach. If you've not yet entered the race, there's still time. For more information, call 848-5528. Input on Proposed Feeder Pattern Change. I'm going to read this again, Mr. President, because I know it's really important to the Board that we get the word out about this opportunity. On Tuesday, December 2nd, at 6:30 p.m. at J.H. Hines Elementary, we will hold a special meeting to gather community input about a proposed change to the high school feeder pattern for Carver Middle School students. Currently, all Carver students feed into Waco High School. The proposed change calls for some Carver students to feed into University High. Again, that meeting is Tuesday, December 2nd, 6:30 at Hines. Outstanding Teachers. On Thursday, December 4th, at 6:30 p.m., we look forward to gathering at the Ridgefield Performing Arts Center at Waco High School to honor 24 of our outstanding teachers. And it was really a difficult choice when you have as many outstanding teachers as we have. Photos of each of our 2014-15 outstanding teachers can be found on the district website. The entire community is invited to help us celebrate and congratulate teaching excellence. And is Ms. George still here, or did she slip out, Dr. Shepherd? Well, when Ms. George was here, I wanted to say this with her here, but I'm going to say it even without her. Sometimes we get, "Oh, Ms. George."
She wanted to make an entrance.
Okay. Some news is very happy and sad, and I am very, very, very happy, and the district is very, very happy for Ms. George that she has found a job at Baylor that she's been hoping to get for quite some time. And so we're happy in that regard. But Waco ISD is very, very sad that we will not have you with us anymore. Ms. George has been heading up the WISD Education Foundation for four years and has done an excellent job. And I just want to applaud you and let everyone know, and our television audience, how much we're going to miss you. We're happy for you, but we will miss you. I hate to end on a sad note, Mr. President, but I can't think of a joke. Fortunately.
That may be happy news, that you don't have a joke. Any other announcements? Anyone on the Board? And I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Second, all those in favor, or adjourn.
Oh, yes, Happy Thanksgiving. Yes. Oh, and if anyone can imagine, it's already Thanksgiving.